Good evening and welcome to the March 5th Board of Education meeting. If you would all please join me to pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will begin with the report of the superintendent, Dr. Byrne.
Thank you very much. Good evening and thank you for joining us for our March 4th Board of Education meeting. I hope everyone had a good weekend, enjoyed that sunny weather on Sunday. I'd like to take a moment to congratulate the cast and crew of the Parsons Street Players for an outstanding performance of Mamma Mia. I know many on this table were there this past weekend. It was such a great show. There was so much energy in the pack and the kids really seemed to be having such a great time up on stage. Secondly, I'd like to congratulate the Boys Varsity Basketball Team who made it to the Section 1 Class A Championship at the County Center. They very narrowly lost on Saturday, but they really did play their hearts out against a very tough team from Byram Hills. It was quite a back-and-forth game with a really tough defense being played by both teams and I'm so proud of our team and coaching staff. And I'm freshly back from a short trip to Albany for the New York State Council of School Superintendent's Winter Meeting. Much of the focus for this week's meeting was on Governor Hochul's executive budget and the fiscal challenges facing school districts. Tonight, we continue our deep dive into specific budget areas of interest to the public. This week, we'll hear presentations about the technology, athletics, and facilities portions of the budget. As always, I will send the presentations and videos for those subject areas out to the community in my Friday update for those who like to get their news that way. They are also posted on a special area on the district website with all the 2024-2025 budget information. Look for the link in the pop-up bubble that appears on the website. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Okay, thank you. So let's get started with those presentations. Presentation for technology.
All right, Dr. Sassoon, come on up.
All right, so good evening. Tonight, you're going to hear about the, all the wonderful things the Technology Department is working on. We're going to give you an overview of the 23, 24 projects and then go into the budget and our overview for that work in the 24-24 school year. Before I start, I want to thank the team. I'm presenting this to you tonight, but it's without our entire team, this wouldn't be possible. So thank you to the Board of Ed, our administrative colleagues that are here, to all of our IT engineers. We actually have two in the audience tonight. Stephen Amy, our operations manager, and Dylan Diombre, who's our Level 3 engineer. Our two amazing tech coaches, Kimberly and Carol Anne, our two data specialists, and then our clerical administrative support. So it's really because of all of them, all of this work is possible. When we think about the RYE commitment and the three pillars, one of the amazing things of working in the Technology Department is that we truly touch every department and every individual within the school district. So we are constantly working with our teachers, we're working with our students, we're working with the community, and there's all different facets, whether it's from an instructional standpoint, an operational standpoint, a security standpoint, or just educating our family members on different technologies and programs that we offer that their students are using within the class. It's an amazing opportunity because you actually see all the different pieces come together and work as a system. And I know when the RYE commitment was designed, that was one of the things that Dr. Byrne said is that we all need to work together and rely on each other. And so that is something that you really see within our department, that everything is a domino effect and we do support everyone within the organization. In the very beginning, Dr. Byrne, for his budget presentations, talked about our operating standards. And so there's several up here that you'll see on the screen. The ones with the red arrows really pertain to the Technology Department and all the different ways that we support other departments within the district. So just to highlight a few, provide excellence in teaching and learning. So all of the amazing things that Dr. Murray talked about and Dr. Reden talked about at the first presentation, we're fortunate to partner with them to make sure those instructional goals and programs are happening in the classroom with the support of the technology behind them. To ensure continued instructional innovation and growth in academics and extracurricular programs, again, being able to provide that not only from an infrastructure standpoint, but of a curricular standpoint. Thinking about implementing research-based professional development, our two amazing coaches providing all types of professional learning constantly. This afternoon, actually, we just finished our second round of AI for our teachers, artificial intelligence and getting them up to speed with what and how that could be used in a classroom. So the amazing work that they are doing to provide professional learning to our teachers. Providing safety, security, health, and efficient innovative learning spaces. You will hear about that tonight from a security standpoint, but also an innovative standpoint and all the work that we are doing to design learning spaces that are flexible and that meet the demands of the RYE commitment. And then you're going to hear, which is probably the most important, to create a physical responsible budget that provides long-term financial stability. So our plan, and you'll hear when we get to those slides, are really phased-in projects that we think about the entire picture. We don't do things in a silo. We don't want to do them more than once, but we want to think longevity-wise, how will this get us through the next 10 years, the next 15 years? And we're not just solving a problem because it's happening right at the moment. So with these in mind, you're going to hear about, again, the projects that we are working on right now and then where are we heading in the future. So tonight's focus, I'll start off with introducing some of the district infrastructure, security, and cybersecurity projects that we've worked on. We're going to talk about the instructional technology professional learning cycles that are still happening. We're going to look at innovative spaces, not only from a construction standpoint, but also just from a building standpoint and how we're starting to transition those spaces. You're going to see the improvements for district data and communications. We're going to talk about our technology committee. Jen Boyle is on our committee, so we just had our first meeting. So you'll hear about all the updates of what we are working towards on that committee together and then our goals and how does that all lead to the 24-25 school year. So our first piece is always district infrastructure. And the reason I say that is because several years ago, sitting with Dr. Byrne coming to the district and saying, "We have no internet for two weeks," or "Things aren't working. We can't get on." We laugh now. We were crying before. These are all things that are really important to us. And so when we think about that commitment, we made a commitment to say that we are not just going to fix and get us into a place that we're working for the moment, we're going to plan for the future. And so with Edge Tech, with our engineers constantly thinking about improvements, these are things that we've planned for five years, for 10 years, but they have to be done in phasing. From a financial standpoint, from a workload standpoint, it's not anything that we can actually just do in one school year. So projects that I'm going to be talking about and going through right now will sound really familiar because we've talked about them last year at the elementary level and now we're phasing up into the secondary level. So last year, we were fortunate to sit here and saying, okay, we had to re-cable all of our elementary schools to be on CAT 6A. Now, we're taking in phases, doing the high school, middle school, but with the size of the campus and how large it is. We started last summer, we're continuing this year, and then into the summer as well. So that is a Phase 2 project. With that in mind, one of the, I would say, biggest projects, it's always been a goal of mine here, is to consolidate closets across the district. That just makes sense. When I landed here as a staff developer years ago, working with teachers, and I would just look behind me and I'm like, I'm not really sure why there's a huge server rack in a classroom that's humming with all kids in the classroom. But I never actually thought that we'd have the opportunity to make those shifts and move because of the work that's behind it. But again, being on the construction team, being on the operations team, we just don't do things quickly to get them done. We're constantly thinking about big picture. And so this was the opportunity to say, with the construction that's happening, with the cabling that needs to be done, what makes the most sense right now? And that is to start relocating these servers out of classrooms and putting them in more centralized places throughout the building. It's better for our engineers. It's obviously better for student learning and flexible spaces. And so we're excited. We started to do that work last summer. At Midland School, we were able to move one of our closets. We've started to add a few at the high school, middle school, and then we'll be taking away some. So it just streamlines our flow for things. Rob is probably also very excited that we're doing this because we're getting out of some of his spaces. But it just, it really makes sense for the big picture as to why we would be moving these systems around. With that continuing, again, back to that RYE commitment, upgrading infrastructure equipment, so whether that be servers or switches, things that you don't actually see when you're, we're sitting here talking, but it's everything that's making these buildings operate and function on a day-to-day basis. One of our fun projects, I think Dr. Byrne loved this project this year, was our phone extension upgrade. So I don't know if you've noticed now, but when you call into the district, if I looked to the office to the left of me or the right of me, the numbers make sense and there's a script as to why you would be calling a number. So in the past, extensions were just given out to give out because we didn't really have a flow or a system in terms of naming conventions or numbering. With the construction work that we've been doing and just overall looking at the big picture, we were able now to streamline. That central office starts with one and we go all the way down to our buildings and it just makes sense for individuals when now you're calling. This is over several years this work has been done and the project is not over because we have to now work on our phone tree when you actually call into the district. That directory piece needs to get done, but these are all projects and systems that we've been working on. The Promethean Board installations, and I don't want to take over Rob's presentation, but I'll touch upon it slightly. Again, looking at the big picture and looking at all of our spaces, and thank you to the RYE Fund for supporting this initiative of the Promethean Boards. It would be very easy to just outfit every single space right now with a board and just put them up. But we've been sitting down operationally to really think about when we're thinking about innovative spaces and what makes sense for student learning and for teachers, and it's to relocate them in spaces and rooms that make sense. And so while the installation may have taken a little bit longer than we've anticipated, when we're done in a classroom, we can officially say that we're done in a classroom because the boards are hung in the right place. It makes sense for furniture that's going into the space. And we are also starting to relook at our device structure, where now we are not having clunky desktops in the classrooms. We're getting mini computers. They're going behind the screens. Wire management looks much better and it's just a very inviting place to learn. But it does take a little bit of time to do that. Rob and his team have been great. We're taking down old chalkboards and he's finishing the walls and we're painting and we're doing all of this work to make sure that rooms look the way that they need to be. So that's what I mean when we think about projects, long-term and big picture. These are things that we're talking about. We've had great success in implementing. Dylan, who's our lead engineer here, has been working tirelessly at our heat map tests. And so we've conducted them at all elementary schools, where we go around and physically check hallways in classrooms to make sure we have the appropriate access that we need in each of the rooms. Years ago, all of our access points were just dedicated in hallways, which didn't make sense instructionally where all of our devices were in the classrooms. But now, when we think about from a security standpoint and just needing access and Wi-Fi in all parts of the building, we were able now to come back, design, or have these heat map tests implemented, and then look at the data to really determine what are our next moves. So Dylan's been instrumental in that and saying, okay, this is where we're really strong in parts of the building. This could use a little bit more coverage and then we're able to install additional access points where it's needed. So we've done that across the three elementary schools. We're working on implementing those additional access points that are needed and then we will do the high school, middle school once the cabling is done. And then our normal every year upgraded for just computers, imaging district-wide components. With that, not only from the infrastructure side, we've grown our mobile devices exponentially over the last several years. And so I'm proud to say in the elementaries, we are one-to-one, even though they do not take them home. We're one-to-one in the middle school and then high school is BYOD. Every single one of our faculty members, our teachers, our aides, teaching assistants, whoever really needs a device, we've provided them with that as well. So the support that we need to maintain that has also grown on the engineered side to be able to sustain this. We've upgraded all of our Chromebooks at the elementary and middle school level. We're proud to say that every sixth grader that comes into the district into middle school gets a brand-new device. They're not using refurbished devices and they get a brand-new system that leads them through the next three years of their middle school careers and then in high school, they start to bring their own. We've purchased with the support of the RYE Fund, with the changes in curriculum from our engineering department, which we're so proud of, and our digital arts, implementing now different iPads and laptops that can support the new curriculum work that we're doing. So thank you to RYE Fund for that. And then just continue to provide our loner program that we have across the district. So not every family in the community is able to provide. And so we do have a process in place that if anyone needs a hotspot or a device, they go through my office and we're able to provide that to them for whatever the timeframe may be. With that, we need as much tech support as we can possibly get to maintain all of these systems, which is great. So we have several engineers across all of our buildings, but we also make sure that we provide support to our faculty, students, and parents through a help desk. We've mainstreamed the help desk this year, especially at our middle school level, so that now from a software standpoint, they're using the same software as our faculty and staff. So now it's one system. It's just built out through another portal so that students can submit and advocate for themselves when they have any technology needs. We've also streamlined that support in making sure that we have operational hours when kids are available within the department. So our office hours at the secondary level are Monday through Friday. They can come before school. They can come during community lunch, during the middle school lunch periods. And there's always a designated engineer onsite to support the needs of the students. So they fill out a help desk ticket and then they can actually one-to-one sit with an engineer to work through whatever the problem may be. If it's something that's a little bit more instructional than like an infrastructure type of question or support, that's where they also have the ability to go to Carol Anne Del Judas, who's our instructional coach for 612. So there's a lot of supports in the buildings for students that will need it. From a security standpoint, we are really excited for all the work that we've completed, but also the ongoing projects. So I think we sat here several years ago talking about the thought and the idea of having locks and PA systems in all of our buildings and we are excited to talk about now the completion of. And so Salto Door Access has now been installed in all of our elementary schools. I think we have a few locks left at Milton, but we are, I would say, 95% done, which we're excited by the end of this month. Hopefully that is completed. PA upgrades in all of the elementary schools as well, in addition to the lockdown alert notifications that we were able to push out to all of our buildings, which seem like three small bullets on that screen, but the task is incredibly large. And so it took the entire IT department, it took facilities, it took the maintenance team, install teams, a lot of coordination and work to get the locks in, to program them, to inventorying them, to test them, working with John Hawkins, our security team. It's just, it's really nice to have this operational team that works together, that we cover all the different areas that we need to. Some things that are still ongoing, so as we said, we're dedicated to upgrading our district infrastructure within the district. We're also dedicated from a security standpoint. And so making sure that we continue to evaluate different cameras and software and upgrades that are available and out there, that is something that we are constantly looking at and doing. We've recently just partnered with RYE PD to enhance the portable radio functionalities in our buildings. So worked with them to install some cellular devices at some of the schools just to see if it enhances their systems and capabilities within a school. So that's in its infancy stages. We just started that work and we're going to test one of our elementary schools and then if we have success, rolling that out into the other buildings as well. We're always revisiting card access locations just to make sure that we're maximizing functionalities for all users. So as construction happens, as projects happen, as conversations happen, we are constantly getting some feedback and some thoughts as to, did you ever think about? And so we sit down as a team when we meet throughout the month to say, do we need to revisit any card access for doors for security and functionality? And then this year, with the help of John Hawkins, we were able to implement our Minga ID cards at the high school and middle school for students. So now students have digital IDs. Anytime a new student comes into the district from registration, they get imported into the system. We make their ID cards and then they're able, as they come in and out of the buildings every morning, they're able to show their identification. So that's been really helpful for our guards and our entire security team. One of my favorite projects this year, I don't know if it was Dylan's, but it was definitely mine, was our cybersecurity audit. And so this came to us last year as a recommendation from the audit committee to really think about. We go through internal audits and external audits all the time, but are we really ever really looking at our security systems in place? And so for someone that likes audits, I don't know why. For us, as a department, we take it as professional learning. And so we know there's going to be areas of improvement. There's going to be areas that we do really well in. But we took this as an opportunity to say, let's take a dive into it and let's see what comes out of it because with all the work that we're doing, we can find ways that we can grow together. So we've vetted three different vendors when we went through the cybersecurity phasing to figure out who would be the best partnership for RYE. We wound up partnering with a company called Redpoint and they conducted what I will call Phase 1 of an audit because a cyber audit is huge. It's long. There's so many different avenues and ways that you can go about having an audit. So we worked with them to partner to say, this is where we're going to start in our Phase 1 process. So throughout Phase 1, we looked at conducting two tests, which took approximately one to two months to complete. But it was a very intensive test that they worked constantly with our lead engineer, setting up systems, looking at different avenues of how they were going to conduct the audit. We did an external and an assumed breach. Those were two tests that we worked on. And so the external was really designed to just see what vulnerabilities we had from the internet, like what was available, what was out there, what were they able to get to. And then the assumed breach was a scenario that they acted as if they were in the network and within a timeframe, what could they gain access to? We were very excited with the report that we received from Redpoint and this will be discussed more at the next Technology Committee meeting for more in-depth information. But just to give you some highlights, they actually named us as within the top 10% of their clients where we weren't compromised with vulnerabilities. And so we were very proud of all the work that Edge Tech, our engineers, Dylan especially, has been doing to make sure that we are as secure as we can be right now. Using phrasing like "RYE City School District exemplified a strong security posture all around for both assessments" was just language that they used in the audit to really show that our systems are in place and their security behind everything that we're doing. So while there were some really good things, we did get some recommendations, which we will be working on implementing throughout the rest of the year into next year. And some of the other highlights that we've talked about as a department is that now that we've done the audit, we want to continue this professional learning yearly. And so this has now been built into the budget where there will be a line item for an audit so that next year, we can continue with our testing. And two recommendations from Redpoint was that we would look at doing a cyber risk assessment and another internal vulnerability scan. So there's just so many ways and avenues you can go with this. But we were really excited, at least for Phase 1, we're on the right track. But, you know, we always want to make sure that we're getting better. So these are things that we're going to now continue to do on a yearly basis. Once all of the infrastructure, so we've talked a lot a bit about infrastructure and systems and maintenance, if that is all working like a well-oiled machine, this is where the professional learning can really happen. And what happens within the classroom from a teaching standpoint, from a learning standpoint, our systems are then working and students are able to access materials and software and computers, hopefully without a hitch. In order to do all of that work, having our coaches support our teachers has been instrumental in their learning curve in terms of in 2024, what are all the new technologies and systems that are available? So our two coaches are busy daily, working in small groups, pushing into classrooms, working individually with teachers before and after school. As I said today, from 3:30 to 5:00, we had an in-service class on AI. They're just constantly with our whole professional learning team, making sure that teachers and students have resources, materials that they need to be successful. We've also continued with our technology communication. So not only does learning need to take in person, but having a more hybrid model, a remote model for this, which would be our quarterly bulletins or Tech Tip Tuesdays, which are just pieces of information of good practice of instructional tech in the classrooms. We've also had the ability to present at several conferences this year and also attend several conferences. We're going to an AI conference next week to be able to bring back and to support the learning for our April Superintendent Conference Day. So we're really excited for these opportunities. And then just a couple of classes that we've taught this year so far, whether it's AI, whether it's Promethean Boards, whether it's innovative classroom space and design, everything that we are talking about is we're able to do this because of the strong infrastructure components that we have in place within the district. With all of that said, really thinking about not only construction, but innovative spaces in general and how technology supports that. So classroom furniture, mobile technology, Promethean Boards, these have all been things that, again, have taken time in each of our buildings. But our principals have been great to support this work that as we are making shifts and strides in classrooms, we really want to think that and talk with our teachers to make sure they understand the why behind this. Why are we doing this? Why is it important now to have furniture that moves? Why is it important to have technology in the right location? Why is it important to maintain the mobile structures or the 3D printers or the laptops that we have in the space? And that's because conversations and learning look so different now, right? We've moved away from that, as Dr. Byrne would say, our one-school-model house, right, into this flexible learning communicative environment where students are talking, they're engaging, they're conversing constantly and they need a flexible environment to support that. So these are just some of the bottom pictures at Milton School and Midland School this year of design work that we've done with teachers. And it doesn't happen overnight. So I know Ms. Pykarski's here and she will tell you, we sit with your team of teachers, we talk about what are needs in your classrooms. We go through a prototype and a plan of designing it together of what it should look like. We redesign it several times. We pick colors within our color wheel because we're all very particular about colors, or I am. And so they have a slew of things that they can choose from. We've done this process now so many times. We've learned from our first room that we've designed what works and what doesn't to now designing spaces where I would say Ms. Pykarski's fifth-grade teachers and students, every time you go into that classroom, will tell me, "Dr. Sassoon, did you know my furniture can do this?" And I learn best when this happens and I've made this nook and I have this whiteboard. And they're just so excited about the spaces that they have. They're just not sitting in chairs looking at a screen anymore. And so that's been really important to us as we continue with construction, making sure we understand the importance behind the spaces and what are we trying to accomplish in them. From a data standpoint and communications, our two data specialists, Michael and Megan, have been instrumental in really streamlining our data and our systems. So some of the improvements this year and some of the highlights that we're currently working on right now is our registration process. So we really started to streamline that where now we're not waiting for information to come through our student information system in July. We've set up different schools, if you will, within the organization where other members in RYE, like admin, can actually look at student enrollment before the July 1 school year. So we've kind of worked within the system to make schools. We're working with the Health Department to make sure they have access to students and information before July 1. So we're just really trying to streamline and maintain systems so that everyone has access when needed. We've worked on improving our course request screens in Power School for high school and middle school scheduling, which was instrumental this year for that process, which is happening right now. We've automated several software systems like Destiny and Minga to just automatically sync with Power School instead of doing manual data manipulation. My favorite report, which comes out every other year, is our Civil Rights Report. We're currently working on that right now, which is a huge report that the districts are required to do. Power School is coming out with a new interface for all of our users come this summer. So we're getting ready, making those training guides and manuals for our teachers, for our admins, and then even for parents and for students on what it's going to look like. Jen, Jane's looking at me. Don't worry, there will be a document with pictures and how-tos. Providing also Power School training. So Megan and Michael have been instrumental on the team to now, we want to really think about Superintendent Conference Day. While those learning is for teachers, it's also for all of our staff members. And so they have been instrumental in making sure that they are now the ones actually providing the training to our clerical staff on all the upgrades and ins and outs of Power School during that day. So they gave two amazing sessions last November, or this November. And so we'll be looking at that again as we have other days coming up of information that needs to come out. So that's been a really great time for them to be able to do that work. As you know, we've launched our new website, so that came out in November. Colleen McGreevy has been great with supporting our website Wednesdays. So every Wednesday, you get a little nugget of information from us as to new features and enhancements that are part of the site. And so hopefully those have been received well about how to navigate what we've built over the last couple of months. The new site, as we've talked about many times, the goal for that was to just really highlight student work and pictures and images of all the great things that are happening within our buildings, to be able to translate our website into multiple languages and to be also to have a website that's available on many different platforms. And so we've removed our mobile app since our new website is mobile-friendly and we've heard nothing but great feedback so far, which we're excited about. And our Technology Committee. So this year, one of the goals of the Technology Committee is to really look at evaluating software from an instructional standpoint district-wide. The reason we are looking at this, and I'll explain when we get to the budget slide. The reason we are looking at this, and I'll explain when we get to the budget slide, is for the first time, we have now taken all of our software that's happening or that we've purchased district-wide, and it goes into a software code that's within the Technology Department. So everything from instructional to operations to business to human resources to health to safety, that is now all coming out of one budget code. When we started to look at all the different tools that we have, we start, we would tackle first was the instructional side. And so our coaches have been great with working at me to look at data and usage reports, to think about new softwares that are coming out, what are softwares that we currently have that have like features? And so we can try to consolidate and condense so that we can look at other opportunities for things that are available. So that is really the goal this year of the committee. We met last week for our first time. Jen was there. And we had an opportunity to go through our software survey. So we sent a survey out to all teachers, asking for feedback on what tools are you using? What's working well? What are things you wish we had as a district? And so we looked at that data. The committee did agree that we didn't have as much feedback as we'd like. So we reopened the survey until spring break. So an email went out today for everyone. Jane, it went up significantly, our data points, so you'd be very excited. And so the goal is by the next meeting is we are going to condense like softwares together. We're going to look at how each software operates, what are the pros and cons of each, similarities and differences, and then decide as a committee what we're going to propose to the larger group, whether we are going to consolidate, or we need both, or we need to make some structural shifts that maybe a software is better more at the secondary level, not as useful at the elementary, and where can we make some modifications? One thing that we have committed to continue doing with our software, though, is that we are streamlined across the three elementary schools. And so in the past, that is one thing that was very challenging. Software was bought at the building level, and there may not have been consistency across the three schools. Software will still stay within the Technology Department, but we may have flexibility to say now, we do not need a district subscription to this. We need a K-5 subscription, or a 612, or both. So these are all things that the committee is going to be looking at this year. So this is everything we're doing now. And in 24, 25, we are just going to be continuing these projects. And so as we talked about before, the importance of district infrastructure and security enhancements, those are all things that we are committed to continue doing. Additional cabling, additional wiring at the high school, middle school, upgrading our PA systems here at the high school, middle school, continuing our Promethean installations district-wide, and working on our new wings in the elementary schools for Midland and Osborne. Continuing to upgrade mobile technology at each of the schools, looking at ways to continue professional development for all of our faculty, staff, and students for new tools that come out. Continue to work with operations and facility to design these innovative classroom spaces, working with our principals and teachers on what that design should look like and what's best for kids. Continue to streamline all of our communications district-wide, so with all of our data systems. Our real goal is to make sure all of our systems are talking together. And so that's something that we're tackling system by system, but it's still an ongoing goal. And then, as you heard before, working yearly now, we completed Phase One, but working on a cybersecurity Phase Two plan for next year, and continuing that moving forward within the budget. So in order to do all of that, we do have a very healthy technology budget, which we are very grateful for. Some of the shifts that you'll see in the budget right now, to just highlight a couple of them, would be with our contractual line. So you'll see that increment and those increases in contractual over the last couple of years. And that's been all the wiring work that we've been doing in each of the buildings. So we were committed with our five-year plan from an infrastructure standpoint to do this work. And so it took Year One to complete the elementary schools, and it'll take last summer this year and into next summer to complete the secondary school. So that's where you'll see that line. Other things that we've talked about, which has a slight increase, was our consultants. So having our engineers in support, that's just been an increase because of all the different avenues that the department has been taking on, from the increase in mobile technology to the increase in all of our security projects, construction, all the things that have been happening that are now landing in the Technology Department. These are areas of increase. It also requires more technical skills and ability that we have. And so just increasing the level and knowledge of the engineer that we are bringing on-site moving forward. And then also our software line. So software over the last, I would say, two years has increased in, like, I would say by 10% for some of the different softwares. So it's been instrumental in having the software, but we are going to be doing our due diligence to just really make sure everything we have we're going to continue with. But again, not knowing with some of our vendors, is it a 2% increase, is it a 10% increase? We don't renew software until July 1. So we just make sure that we were able to support that in the budget by having that 10% increase across the board for all of the tools that we are available and are needed. And again, that line doesn't just cover instructional software. It's operational software, it's security software, it's human resources, it's things for special education, it's all departments, food service. Every department within the organization comes out of that line, and you may not have seen that before. So in the past, business software may have come from a business line or human resources. There were tools that would come out of that line. From now, so we're able to consolidate and have everything in one place. We've put it into our budget codes, so that's why that line also looks much healthier than it has in the past. But those numbers were already delegated into other lines in the past. So we really haven't inquired much more from those different departments, but now it just looks like it's consolidated into one area. So that's where we are for technology. Any questions?
All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Sessom. That was a very robust presentation. And it's, you know, technology just continues to evolve and take a more centered place in the educational system and the process. And so to see a continued commitment by the district to evolve with those changes is really greatly beneficial to the system and to the students. So I appreciate that. Does the board have any comments or questions?
I just have a couple of questions. So you just mentioned for the software line, is that the first year we've consolidated everything under the, under technology?
So this was the first year that we've taken. So we haven't necessarily, instructionally, we've added, but in terms of the places that we've taken from, like the business office or other departments, those systems have been maintained. We just now put it into the technology software line.
Okay. I just wanted to get a sense of if this was the first year we're seeing it here, if it's been sort of a slower migration. Okay. And then you mentioned doing another audit again, or building that into the budget. Where does that live in here, Caitlin?
For, I'm sorry, for the cyber audit.
Like, so continuing to do the cybersecurity audits?
It lives in my budget.
Oh, so it doesn't live in here?
No.
Okay.
Because I'm auditing, yeah.
I didn't know. Well, that's a good point, though, because thinking about...
Exactly. Just like software was shifted to technology because it really lives there. All audit lives with me.
But we've planned for it. So when we were doing the Phase One, thinking about estimate of what that would cost, talking to Red Point ahead of time and saying, if we were to continue with you in a year or two, what would that look like? So that we were able to prepare for it for next year.
Great, great. And then just to kind of echo what Jane was saying, and I'll give my committee update fully later, although Caitlin pretty much covered the whole thing.
You're not off the hook. There's still a portion of the agenda that you'll have to speak.
I'm happy to say it again. You know, I think that one of the things, I think technology is probably one of those areas that the growth is so fast. And the, for individuals who are very technologically savvy, the interest in wanting to adopt or try or add some of the amazing things that are in existence now, I mean, I think of AI alone, is just gotta be, it has, it's wonderful and it's overwhelming at the same time. And so I just appreciate the approach that technology is taking to not, not say, we can't do that now, but be open enough to understand, like, what are the capabilities of what's out there? And also with the eye toward, we can't take on everything. So the, looking at it from a fiscal point of view, as well as, you know, how do we, how do we have the most efficient and robust available to our teachers and staff and faculty and our, you know, all of the operations? But yet knowing that there's a limit, as there is always a limit. And so we want to strike that balance as much as possible. So I, that came out very clearly in what you were talking about with, you know, all the decisions you're trying to make on a daily basis, probably. So thank you.
I think one of the biggest things we talked at the Technology Committee to just remind everyone here is one of our biggest stopping points with instructional software is EdLaw 2D. And so we explained to the committee, that's our first stance is when a tool is proposed to us, we do have a form that teachers will fill out, or anyone in the organization can fill out. But the first thing that we do to evaluate that tool is go through a software that we use to evaluate a software, which is funny. But we do use Educational Framework, which is basically an algorithm that's built on the different layers of EdLaw 2D for data privacy and security, that will tell us on a five-point scale, where does this rank? And so it's very easy for us, if we put something through a system, I had a teacher today suggest something, and we looked at it, and automatically it came up with a 0.5 is how it ranked. So automatically, that is not something secure enough for us to even take a look at. And so having that conversation with that person to explain why is something we will always do. It's not just a no, it's explaining of why it's not secure enough to use, and then giving suggestions as to what is. So that really helps us kind of streamline the process. And then when things do hit the benchmark of appropriate use, so a 4.5 and up, then we have to start thinking about consolidating our like softwares that we currently have within the district. And maybe things are better, but then also we need to forego something else. So those are the conversations we're having right now about what's staying and what are we moving on to.
And just having, so just thinking about having applied that software so that you can do that, that can, analysis can be done through that instead of having someone go through each of these, like an individual, go through each of these to figure out, is this compliant, is it not compliant? You know, that's an efficiency and well worth having. So it's those kinds of decision points along the way. That was done, obviously, a while ago, but, you know, it's just indicative of the approach you guys are taking.
Well, and I liked what you said, Dr. Sessom, when you talked about, you know, not just the bright shiny things, right? It's always so, and we talked about with the Promethean boards, it's always so, you know, you see it, and as a teacher, you see it and you go, oh, I need it, I want it. But for you all to stop to say, okay, let's talk about how will you use it? Why would you use it? Where does it make sense to use it? And really, it becomes an instructional tool rather than a technological tool for the sake of technology. Because so often, that's, that's a claim that's made against school districts and educators is that you just use things because they're there. And so I think taking that really thoughtful approach to the implementation and the purchasing, but then also having the Rye Fund, who is able to partner with the district. And so then we can try things in a technological way, try them out, see how they're working before there's much larger investments that are made. We're in a very, very good position fiscally to be able to do that. And so we're certainly grateful, and on a few instances, you mentioned, the partnership with the Rye Fund. And so that's a great thing that I want to make sure we're all aware of. Anyone else? Thank you so very much. It was a great presentation. And with that, we will move on to what will be another wonderful presentation for Health, Physical Education, and Athletics. Ms. Duley?
It's always nice to come and present, and especially with Rob and Caitlin, because just like when Gabby and Tricia and Erin presented, and my colleagues in the building levels, it's so fun to see how we are all integrated and to listen to different components. It's really kind of interesting and fun because there's pieces in there that have, may have nothing to do with my world, in a small piece, but there are so many pieces that I'm aware of because we work together as a team. So it just, it's fun to be here, to be able to do that. So I wanted to thank the team that I work with in Health, Physical Education, Athletics, our teachers, our coaches, our student athletes, specifically Al Mercado and Donna Sorkin, who are a great team, obviously, the administrative team and the Board of Education that help support this healthy budget. So this, this is the first time I really think that while I continuously, when I've done my presentation, have thought about the Rye commitment, I started to get a little more specific on how this relates to athletics and our students. And being my fourth year in Rye, I felt when I'm thinking about students and citizenship in that first pillar, it's a constant thing that we're continuously driving home. However, athletics can be tough in nature, right? There's a lot of people that are participating. There's a lot of life lessons that go along with citizenship. And there are pieces that we continuously examine. And I know for our students, that's sometimes daily meetings and check-ins with my department. It's also partnering with the community and Rye Youth Council specifically. Lisa Dominici has been wonderful, working with Suzanne Short, myself, and Jeannie Romano in the Physical Education Department to talk about teen mental health and how we can bring that teen mental health first aid into the classroom through physical education and what that might look like. Rye Youth Council has done work with our athletes specifically before the season and throughout the season. And those are some of the things that I feel very fortunate that while they're there for our students, they are also part of our community, and I'm grateful for that. Along the lines of citizenship, I also wanted to highlight a few things that just, you know, our student athletes are excited and willing to give back whenever possible. If there's a need, they're there. We've done everything from food drives to supporting cancer research, but also things such as working on mental health with Morgan's Message, the One Love Foundation, which looks at domestic violence. And along those lines, the kids always are eager to do education surrounding that and educating their peers as well. It's not just about raising money. That's something that here that thrives, I think. Related to, I wanted to touch base a little bit on physical education and health education. Jeannie Romano has been a great leader with our department. I know she's very thankful to work with Dr. Murray, especially as the department coordinator, and not only focusing on curriculum mapping, but also looking at the department and best practices that are occurring. We're fortunate enough that we're able to come together and have some of those great discussions. And the district has provided a lot of great support to our department in Superintendent's Conference Day. So thank you for that. Looking at operation standards, you know, you could clearly see there were many areas here, my Gs. Thank you to Michelle for that great idea.
I really liked them when I saw them. I got very excited.
I'm not that excited.
And the next one's really great.
Right. And when she did that, I was like, oh, thank you. So she's awesome, just amazing. So the first G up there, providing excellence in teaching and learning. There's a great collaboration, I feel, specifically through the middle school, high school administration when it comes to the world of athletics specifically, but a K through 12 approach administratively and within our department. As I mentioned, Jeannie has been a great supporter of that. The third component there, operation standard, rather, supporting the physical and mental health. I spoke briefly to that. It's a continuing piece that we, we read about. I recently was fortunate enough to receive an article from Dr. Byrne through one of our board members. Thank you, Jane. And ironically, the same day, the National Federation for High School Sports President sent out a video about mental health and student athletics and activities because other states are inclusive of that. And I'm fortunate enough, next week at my state conference, to be able to see her present. So I'm excited to see that. But it's a constant piece in our world of athletics because we look at our students who are going through so much on a daily basis in school. And athletics is supposed to be a release, but with athletics, sometimes through competition, through daily, you know, issues like collegiate pathways or choices which way they're headed post-high school. All of these things play a role and empty into the athletic classroom, so to speak. And while it's supposed to be a release, it can be stress. And arming our student athletes with the opportunity to handle these challenges and work together is one piece that I think we're continuously trying to improve, but be a part of. And again, I mentioned the Rye Youth Council because they've been instrumental with that. The next operational standard, providing inclusive special education program. The reason why I put that is I feel very fortunate to work with Erin, whether it be something as simple of conversation recently on student eligibility and to make sure our students are receiving all they need and in line with our state standards. But also, while you'll see, and we talk, you know, unified, anyone that talks about unified just glows. But it's not just about unified, it's about looking at individual needs of students and finding their niche. But it's not just about unified, it's about looking at individual needs of students and finding their niche as well. So whether it be a student with special needs or a student that is new to RYE and is looking for opportunity, I feel like another great opportunity to work as a team. Providing safe, secure, health, energy, efficient, innovative learning environment. We're continuously looking at our physical environment specifically. Rob will be presenting next. I know Gabby has been a wonderful leader, working with Rob and I to continuously look at how we can provide a safe and healthy environment for the, our events to take place. Our budget reflects that and balancing this standard specifically as well. Which leads me to the last piece there, creating a fiscally responsible budget that provides long-term financial stability. The one thing that I love about RYE is, you know, you heard Caitlin's presentation and Jane, you hit it when you were referencing what technology can be. I feel many times it's easy to throw money on things and they're not sustainable. So I feel that everything we do and balance and collectively keeps us in focus and is financially not just a responsible budget, but in line with how can we sustain and continue to get better and improve. The next slide with the G's, mental and physical health. This was directly from the presentation that Gabby and Dr. Byrne had first spoke to. And we put the G's next to little things that were related into the area of physical education, health and athletics. So these are the things that we've continued to do in the budget with everything you'll see in there from updates to adding. We've added teams into our budget and still been able to balance and add, continue to add programs within the current budget. That's huge because that's looking at what students' needs are and assessing what is good for RYE and our student athletes and student population. And being able to sustain that over time is really, is a credit to our community and our budget planning process. Because adding things such as programs or softwares or things that you may see on there, like streaming, we get great reviews about it, right? But it has to be sustainable, it has to be part of our budget process. And those are all things that while we may be thankful, assistant coaches, we have approximately, you know, give or take 170 coaches in our programs that we oversee. You know, having a G or an assistant coach when an athlete is injured at an away game is huge. We've seen cases that that doesn't always happen, so we're very fortunate that our current budget sustains this. Gabby and Tracy are Director of Health Services, who's here, thank you. You'll see later when I talk about some of the work we do together, but the portable AED for every team, I know I've talked about it before, but I just can't say enough about it. We had our spring coaches meeting today. We're deploying our AEDs before we begin on Monday officially. Erin Madden, our athletic trainer, is great about sending our updates to check them, make sure that we're, you know, everything's functioning. Those, that's something that doesn't happen everywhere. And I know we're working legislatively, there's a lot coming from this. And I know Dr. Byrne and Gabby have answered questions even about what we do here because it feels like we're setting a standard and I'm very proud of that and thankful for that for our student athletes. So some of the goals, just in general, facilities planning is very broad and it's very small on that, on the screen, so to speak. But I wanted to speak to some of the things that we're doing the current year and where we're headed. And you've seen some of this in previous presentations, but Rob, Gabby and I specifically work with an operations team, which consists of a larger group. However, related to scope and sequence planning, we're looking at what do we have presently and where do we need to go? And we are looking at prioritizing, which you'll see in next year's budget, where we need to head. And that doesn't stop at, okay, once we do a project, how do we sustain it, number one? And number two, what's next? How do we build things into the budget to balance and maintain fiscal responsibility, but still maintaining our facilities? So Rob and Gabby have been working with me quite a bit on this. We've had many people come in to go over ideas of, you know, how should we proceed? It's not just a one-shot deal. These are things that we constantly are looking to maintain. So for this school year, for example, the softball field is something that we've talked quite a bit about. And this is something that has come to fruition, it's a need, it's part of our planning and health and safety. And for this current spring, we will be doing some work on our softball field. Although it might be a long-term goal that we'll be also looking at the summer, it has some immediate needs that we will be taking care of to get the softball field ready for this upcoming season. Some other things that we've done in the past, of course, were the backboards and some other things in the gymnasium. And we've been able to continue, as I mentioned, to offer programming. Health and safety, we've always done emergency action plans. We have templates for different sites and facilities with this. But I just wanted to put this up here because in the fall of 2024, New York State Public High School Athletic Association has mandated that coaches sign off on their emergency action plans. A template from anybody can save a life is what is being utilized. It's something that Tracy and I have started to have conversation with. Our athletic trainer will be involved, I will be involved. But basically anywhere our students are located, there's a plan in place should an emergency occur. Collaboration with health services, I've alluded to this with Tracy and the athletic trainer working on this weekly and Gabby as well. Looking at are we, how we deploy our athletic trainer, how do we meet students' needs? How do we keep accountability and responsibility in the areas of health and safety incident, something as, something as simple as incident reporting? We're able to get Wendy Wells involved with that as well. So there's a nice team effort there to make sure that we're being responsible with our health and safety of our student athletes, but also big picture planning. So once again, I often, this is a snapshot of this year's Varsity Participation, JV Participation and Modified Participation. You'll see fall, winter and notice the spring's a little off because we haven't had it yet. So that's Spring 2023. And again, this is approximately, we have approximately 74 teams. And it's right now dead smack on 37 male teams and 37 female teams. So we're in compliance, obviously, with that. But it gives you a rough idea where our participation numbers are for this year. Very consistent. You have a little spike here and there because you will have programs that have been added that, that were added this year, for example. Not huge numbers, but pretty consistent over the four years with these numbers overall. The cost per pupil breakdown, again, this is an average. I wanted to speak to a few things on this. While coaching remains the same, materials is ever-changing and dependent on needs of the sport. So again, it depends on the participation of the sport, it depends on the needs. For example, materials, we saw it spike in football because we all are aware of our helmet shelf life. We've got a great education on that. We will not be in that situation because in planning, a sustainability, which we just spoke to with one of our operation standards, is if helmets are 10 years shelf life, we don't wait every 10 years to order helmets, right? So we have to be mindful of those things when we're planning. Looking at things like transportation, success costs money at times. And Gabby has been so amazing, her and Kathy in the business office, helping us sustain our opportunities as we have success in postseason. But that means an increase in transportation, it means an increase in other areas. So that's something that is ever-changing and it's something to, difficult to get a pulse on at times. And Gabby's been great at forecasting that, but there are things that just will pop up. For example, when you make a state run, those deeper games that you have to plan for. So you'll see that in the planning this year for 2024 and '25 budget. And again, the cost per people, you look at something like swimming and diving where, yes, it's, it's a larger cost, but we have 23 athletes that are, have given an opportunity in a lifelong sport, so to speak, that, you know, not everyone gets. So, you know, it's great bang for the buck, in other words, I feel. Looking at winter, to highlight a few things, you can see our participation numbers on average, our cost per pupil. I always highlight where we have donations are not included in here, that's a separate code. We do receive donations in some areas for specific sports. That is not inclusive of this because that's not our revenue that we look at, that is a donation, as you know, it comes to you. I feel like that's another area that, looking at the operational standards where we have a good grasp on. Parents, booster clubs, community members know if there's a donation, the process, things aren't just going to show up in RYE. That is, there's a clear process in place and you obviously, I hope, can see that as you've approved things recently. Girls' ice hockey is new on there, we had seven participants this year. It's broken down in the sense that the materials is the contractual cost of a cost per pupil that came from Mamaroneck School District. Mamaroneck was willing to host a third girls' ice hockey merged program. And that is why the billing for this year came from Mamaroneck and not BOSI's as it was originally earmarked for. So that number could fluctuate depending on the number of student athletes that participate. And that number represents materials. And while I put NA on coaching, Mamaroneck's also paying their coaching staff. So it really is materials, meaning ice time, jerseys, equipment and coaching. And they build all districts associated with this merger, a cost per pupil. So you will see when we get to our budget, that number is embedded in contractual. Let's see, and again, boys swim is a little higher, our population at 12, we were league champions this year. We had a very successful boys swim and dive. And those 12 student athletes are able to compete and I'm very thankful for that. So while we see the breakdown, it's always not cognizant of what the opportunities are. And again, things like boys swim and dive, we're renting a pool, we don't have a pool. It's much cheaper to rent a pool than to have a pool. So I'm very fortunate for that, wow, it's a great opportunity. So you kind of have an idea with some of those numbers. So let's look at spring and again, this was up until 2023, not significant of this year. You'll see some of our numbers, cost per people are going down in some areas where we have expended larger amounts of money and material. The new sport on this line, part of the budget is unified basketball. We had approximately 14 students, we're hoping to add to that, we just got our schedule recently. And we're hopeful that will continue to grow with our partners on that number as well. I had to, of course, put a picture, it's a little dark, you can see athletics here. Specifically, an increase you'll see at the end is approximately 5,315 uniforms and supplies. That's simply because costs go up, but also we've added a few teams, so we want to be cognizant of that. While we can balance the budget, we need to be mindful of that. The BOSI services, BOSI's continues to go up on an annual basis based on contract officials, the number of games you play. Again, when you have success, you're paying for those officials, of course. Software items like Huddle, Family ID, Local Live, those are embedded in BOSI's because their costs are adaptable. So we are actually able to benefit slightly on that. Other costs associated are EMTs with ice hockey events, which is a Section 1 requirement, wrestling certifications. When we go to the armory for indoor track and field, it comes out of the BOSI services as well. Again, I mentioned girls' ice hockey, we put in for the 15,000. Obviously, that's conservative in the sense that that's related close to the number that we've had, we've been able to forecast. I have the student population working with our community of a K through 12 approach, so to speak, of our students that have participated in ice hockey all along. But again, that's the number of predicted student athletes that would return, so to speak, or anyone that would be coming up into the high school ranks. And then lastly, transportation, as I mentioned, it's something that we've looked at, we've had to increase because it's an area where we continue to travel and it's not unnecessary. It's part of obviously the process of success and the way our geographic works out in our section and within our game schedule. And then our budget drivers, the first two, the two pictures out of the three larger projects, that is a transfer to capital here. You'll see the wrestling room is up top and that's used obviously by a wrestling team. It's used in physical education classes and has a lot of capability and opportunities. However, we, the wrestling room is very outdated and obviously you can see there's rips in the mat. And this is an area we want to be healthy for our student athletes and our students that participate in physical education class. One of our parents actually, of our athletes actually wrestled in the same room that is here. So this is an area that we've been talking about and thanks to this opportunity with next year's budget, this is an area where we can focus in on and replace mats, we can replace the padding, you know, the ventilation, which is a big piece, lighting and painting and all those things that Rob and Gabby and I will continue to work on should we get the opportunity to, to update this area. I thought it was neat, Rob gave me this picture of the softball in aerial view. And even from the aerial view, you can kind of see that it looks like a patch of dirt. And, you know, we want our student athletes to be proud of where they play, we want them to have a home, so to speak, and feel that they're being heard and that's an area, while we can put dugouts in and do all these great things, which are important, the field really needs some, some, lots of work and we are committing to that with next year's budget as a focus with the high school softball field. And again, there will be a lot of areas, not just the field itself, but positioning of the field. Right now, we don't have an overhang, for example, on the fence on the top, so the balls go into the neighbors' yards. And creating that overhang that can help prevent that will also help our neighbors, obviously, they don't want softballs coming into their yards. The third component there that you don't see a picture of, most of us have been in it, but is our high school gymnasium floor. We can no longer sand the floor down, it's at its bottom, it's at its base. So we need to be cognizant of that, again, sustainability and the floor, the bleachers, painting, lighting, anything that goes along with it. Keep in mind, the bleachers are in great working order, it's not something that we have to replace and gut completely. But the bleacher themselves, which over time we've had to replace because they've broken and there's a little bit of mismatch going on in there. Again, we wanted an area, not only that is functional, but aesthetically looks like we care about that area. And the thing about the gymnasium, which is, which is unique is, physical education uses it, middle school and high school use the high school gymnasium. But if you walk in there in community lunch, it's constantly busy, there's a lot of activity going on. I would, I would put a high school gym in the section up two hours about the number of hours that's used on it because of our community lunch, which we love and we want to embrace. So those three are major areas, going back to our scope and sequence, that we feel are a priority at this time. Our athletic budget, I wanted to celebrate something that's not in here, the RYE Fund for Education. You were able to accept a grant on behalf of the RFE and for our main field scoreboard. Something we've been talking about, I think, for the last two to three years on the replacement of the bulbs and how should we function and where should we go? And we are very grateful that they were able to grant us that money to move forward with the mains, main field scoreboard. And so, we're thankful for that. In the budget, you will see the increases, as I mentioned, the contractual is the girls' ice hockey. Again, it's a little bit higher than we spend this year just to have a safety net. But if for some reason that decreases, that's money, obviously that's in that code, that would not be utilized because it's, in a sense, that increases for girls' ice hockey. You'll see a little bit further, there's some additions with the BOSI's budget, a few increases, as I mentioned, for uniform and supplies. Things continue as, as always to sustain, you've got to have that replacement cycle and everything in mind for future planning. So there's some small adjustments there, but overall thankful to looking at the transfer to capital potential, looking at the RFE and looking at what's here, we would be in excellent shape for the 2024-25 school year. And that's it. There was one sport that we had considered adding that's not here, cornhole.
I believe we have a volunteer coach.
I believe we have a volunteer coach.
Yeah.
So, that's ready to go.
Yes, Mr. Repetto? Ready to do it?
Ready to go.
All right. Thank you very much. I think one of the things that you said, Mr. Le, at the very beginning was the fact that your budget is really represented and represented in many other pieces of the district. And I think, again, when we think about student belonging and student sense of community and self, to know that that is something that is pervasive in all of the areas within the department and within the district is really a testament to supporting students, as mentioned in the RIF commitment. And so, was really happy to hear that part. I don't know if anyone has any other comments or questions.
I had one question. Thank you so much for the presentation.
You're welcome.
Just curious about master plan for athletic facilities. I know Dr. Burns talked in the past about the building condition survey that was put together a few years before the bond and it identified, I think it was like $155 million worth of work. And the bond only covered 80 million and we, included was the turf field. There's quite a few areas of our athletic facilities, like the wrestling room, for example, is in dire need of updating. And then Dr. Burn also talked about for the transfer of capital, that Gabby and the team kind of looked at the greatest needs and what would benefit the school overall.
Sure.
So, just curious, is there for that, you know, for those other athletic facilities, is there a master plan to tackle those eventually? Question one. And two, is there also a plan in place, which I know there is, about, so that we don't get in the situation like we have in the wrestling room with deferred maintenance? So, it gets to the point where it has holes in the mat and that we, you know, it costs more money to rehabilitate it than if we would have taken care of it over the years.
So, I'll answer your second question first because that's something that was something that I didn't elude to because that's something that Gabby and I and Rob spoke to specifically. Like, whatever we put in, we want to be able to maintain. So, looking at the softball field is just a case in point. Whereas, yes, you need maintenance in those other two areas of, that I mentioned. The softball field, obviously, annually needs maintenance, updating and to be able to sustain that. So, in the budget that is being presented, that is a big piece of that, is whatever we're doing, we're looking at how can we sustain and maintain so that years down the road, there is that plan, so to speak. The first question, yes. We have looked at everything from fields to buildings, from fitness centers to outside bathrooms. We've looked at a lot of different areas. And we've looked at costs. We've looked at predicted, you know, benefits of that. We've looked at everything. And the three that were up here were the most needed, we felt. And there's a consistent plan of every year, looking at what's next. How do we prioritize? It may take some involvement of others and a team approach to really make those decisions, definitely. But for this year, it was rather, I don't want to say easy, but those were the areas that we could clearly understand that we needed to look at.
It's the position, obviously, that there are other areas that we would like to get to. And as time goes on, we'll continue to look at those.
Absolutely.
Yes.
And I feel with the team we have, definitely, that's something that we constantly talk about.
You're welcome.
And so, Susan, before you'd mentioned some work that would need to be done on the softball field before this spring. I'm assuming that that's what you're referring to when you refer to the annual maintenance that's already existing in the budget and that what is being proposed for the transfer to capital, that is a more comprehensive, real overview, clean up, freshen up.
Absolutely.
Of that.
Gab, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah. A complete overhaul of the field.
Yes.
And so, that that is separate and apart from what is being, what will be done this spring and what would be in the 24-25 budget.
Correct.
Correct. The ongoing maintenance will live in the facilities budget in terms of addressing once we get the softball field to where we want it to be, once we get the wrestling room to where we want it to be. Maintaining the track, you know, we talk about the turf field and the track as, you know, we just did it. But guess what? It needs to be maintained. So, Rob and I and Susan have worked really hard in building out in the facilities budget, how do we maintain all of these features that we're putting in and taking that look at athletics and trying to prioritize getting these locations to a suitable level and then maintaining them going forward.
Great. Excellent. Anyone else? No? All right. Wonderful. Thank you for a great presentation.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. And now, here he comes, Mr. Magliano for facilities presentation.
Rob, if I could see that, I'd help you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm excited to present my budget, the 24-25 year. So, as I began this year, looking at the RIF commitment, I always have this presumption that we operate in the background. And our primary job is to provide a clean and safe and healthy learning environment. But this year, I actually did get a lesson. And when I looked at the RIF commitment, the portion especially to students, there's a section there about helping students become socially responsible, caring citizens. So, I had the opportunity to work with a bunch of generous donors for the, from the Osborne PTO that raised a bunch of funds really quickly to help build a playground. And at the end of the playground, I got a beautiful, which I'd love to share with everyone. At some point, it'll be available for viewing above my cubicle. But it was, it was a handwritten note from every class, from every student. And the amazing part is that they didn't misspell my name anywhere. So, the fact that there's 10 letters and five syllables and five vowels.
It's that new phonics program and the work with the Haskins.
I think that's a testament to the teachers, but.
Oh, Rob, can you pass that around? Sorry. I promise I'm going to listen to the rest of your presentation.
So, it really, I, to me, that really stood out this year. And to be able to be part of that, and I know, actually, Angela's here. So, I have to, I have to thank everyone there. And it was, it was touching and meaningful. So, it, it's just motivating for the next project. There was also a cake-sized cookie that came from a snack tree. That also goes a long way. So, I just want to just make that clear.
He's very humble. He did his work magic with that.
Oh.
Wait, go back.
You've got to show your things, your tools. You're so good.
Sorry about that.
I gasped when I saw them. I was so excited. And then I went back to Susan's presentation. I was like, those cheese are intentional. And then I was like, well, where are Tricia's and Aaron's?
I have a very boring arrow.
I know. I'm expected. So, Rob has set the bar. Understand, everyone. It's been set. And Rob, you can't use screwdrivers and hammers next year.
Now, we have an arsenal of tools I could pick. Chainsaws and jackhammers. So, the RIF commitment is very, is very broad and overarching, where the operating standards are a little more detailed and provide a little more guidance here. So, the four that I have highlighted there, research-based professional development really applies to some of our, some of our staff who, we have newly formed maintenance department that we're working hand-in-hand on a daily basis. But they've been taking a couple courses through district support for an HVAC, an electrical class, which in that knowledge, there's immediate benefits to the district. So, that's one example. As I mentioned, the safe, secure, healthy environment, that, to me, that's a minimum standard. But again, spelled out here as a, as an operating standard for all departments. Efficient use of resources and personnel. We, we take advantage of any opportunity we have when there's other events and there's overlaps, such as Saturdays when there, there's theater events or athletic teams here practicing. We take that time, we staff it, and we actually get stuff done and utilize the skills that are inherent in a lot of our staff. So, there's painting and there's, there's baseboard replacement. And we just try to maximize that time. And again, creating a fiscally responsible budget. I could, as, as I go on with the other slides, I will explain how we look at trends and costs and how we try to control that to the best of our ability. I am not too fast on the slide. Sorry. So, to give you an idea of what an operation we do have, the RIF City School District has a pretty large footprint. All told, we're over 45 acres. I actually use some of our aerial imaging that we have with the county and I was able to verify some of these numbers. The high school alone is at 20 acres. Midland and Osborne at about half that each. And Milton, although it's our largest campus, it's well over five acres. About a half a million square feet of maintained space that we're responsible for on a daily basis. So, to spell out what we're looking at on a daily basis, I have two separate lists here, kind of separating the maintenance and custodian. But it really is one team and there's a lot of overlap and where we're all working towards the same goal. But as you could see on this list of some of the focus areas for our maintenance department, 14 boiler plants, 60 major rooftop units, five functional kitchens and serveries, which are used on a daily basis. There's 10 server closets. And each of those server closets have climate control, even in the winter, where air conditioning them because these, these are putting a lot of heat output and we have to maintain that. There's, there's alerts and that IT gets. And the moment there's an issue, we're working as a team to resolve that. And, you know, obviously, Caitlin spelled out the, the integration of our two departments and how we're always collaborating. And that's just one example. 150 breaker panels and all the circuitry and throughout all the buildings, the sprinkler, fire suppression, fire alarm systems. We have seven elevator, seven elevators for passengers and chairlifts and freight, which all have to be maintained, monitored. They have emergency call buttons. There's, it's just, it's just one example of, of a lot of our infrastructure that we're constantly on top of. As I mentioned, half a million square feet of maintained space, which is cleaned on a nightly basis when school's in session. 127 toilet rooms. I actually have lists of, you know, how many, how that breaks into faucets and urinals and how we divide the space. But I'll, I'll share that for another day. I'll spare everyone that. Over 225 classrooms and all the multiple large spaces that we have, the auditoriums, media centers, six gymnasiums that are in near constant use. Even during breaks, there was golf sessions in Osborne. There was basketball for, for both teams while we're doing construction and, you know, while we're doing other maintenance. The building's under use. And thousands of windows and doors and the associated hardware, you know, where, that we're constantly with input from staff, letting us know when there's issues. We're addressing those and trying to maintain that safe environment. So, getting down to the numbers here, the facility budget in aggregate has gone up nearly 544,000 with some of the key drivers spelled out below. 51,000 in supply costs. So, one of the, the graph that you see in the lower right-hand corner, it is a snapshot of about a five-year period. I try to use some, some items that we, we buy in aggregate, that we buy in large quantities. But I use those as a bellwether. So, for example, toilet paper and paper towels. When you multiply 127 toilet rooms and plus all the fixtures, you could see how, how a small change in dollars really can be significant dollars in total. So, the, what, what is clear in some of the trends that you see there, each, each set of color groups is one product over, over multiple years. So, in each item, there's a clear upward trend. And I think there's pressures from, for multiple reasons. Some of it shows supply chain spikes. But overall, it is an upward, it is an upward trend that I don't expect to go down. So, we have to capture that in our budgeting. Right above that, there was one item. So, I did want to, you know, I don't want to just bring examples that, that prove my point. There, there is some good news. And I used the MERV 8 and MERV 13 filter example as one item. So, prior to the recommendations that we have adopted since COVID was, we used to use a MERV 8 filter. Now, we use MERV 13 throughout the district. And back in 2018, 2019, there were, there were significantly higher costs than a MERV 8. So, the MERV 13 is the blue line above. And you could, you could see that through, through COVID, it was, it was at a much higher, it was at a much higher cost. And there was market pressures and competition that actually drove that down as it, as it became readily available on the market. But in the last three years, it's definitely increasing and we expect that to continue to increase and, which I imagine are just inflationary pressures. But I did want to show that we're, we're looking at every item and, you know, capturing expenses that do go down and looking at the budget as a whole. There is, the next item there, there's a $100,000 increase for equipment. So, this is, this is in a replacement cycle for some of our vehicles. We have a pretty old fleet. Recently, we, in the last budget, we were able to make a purchase for a new plow vehicle, which replaced about an 18-year-old vehicle that was completely rotten. And it gave us the ability to still be able to, to react very quickly when, when there's a snowfall. But our fleet is aging. We have, the next newest vehicle, besides the one we just purchased, is a 2015. And we have an 04, 05, and an 06. So, very low mileage vehicles. We don't use them a lot. But they are, it's, it's an aging fleet. And, and we've been maintaining them. So, some of them get very low mileage. But the miles that we do put on are usually when it's plowing. So, we, you know, we work them hard. So, it's kind of the equivalent of sitting on the couch for a year and then once in a while, you just run a marathon. So, that's what we ask of our vehicles. And they, and they, they look the part. But, so there is a replacement schedule. But there also is something that, that we did some research on and we demonstrated a autonomous field lining machine, which I've included in this budget. And we, it not only will deliver a more accurate product, it's, it interacts with some GPS software that guides the machine. And we could get CRISPR, right or angles and allow us to maintain some of the, it's not completely autonomous. It's kind of, it's, there's some human supervision, but the machine runs autonomously. So, that, that piece of equipment is in here. And hopefully, that'll free up some manpower, but also deliver a better product for, for our teams. The next item, there's annual maintenance for HVAC systems and athletic facilities. As Susan was mentioning, we're looking at all our facilities and trying to avoid that long periods of deferred maintenance. So, repaint the, the track, for example, is an item that we have to look at. Although, it is a fairly new track, there is wear that happens. It's going to be about five years by the time, you know, we're ready to paint it. So, we're looking at just staying on top of that maintenance. In addition, we have a lot of equipment that was, was put in recently, some of it through the capital project. And we want to make sure. we want to make sure that we're maintaining that properly, just like changing the oil on your vehicle. Although you have a new vehicle, there's still some things you have to do to make sure that it's running optimally. And the last item, very large budget driver, is our utility expenses. And that's the, the chart in the lower right-hand corner. And I use Milton as an example because it's one of the schools that it had some of the, the least impact from the capital project. So some of those improvements or efficiencies aren't necessarily skewing the number there. As time goes on, I'm hoping to get larger trends to show a bigger snapshot of, of where, where we're saving money, where utility is spiking and, you know, potential savings. So the, the yellow bars are electricity costs and you could see it's just in a steady, it's been in a steady incline. 37%, 37% increase in electricity over the four-year period that I have on the graph and it's going to continue to grow. Interestingly, the gas is a lower increase, but in 2021, when the new high efficiency boilers went in. So although there's minimal improvements, it's still a massive improvement that we were able to deliver at Milton. And I believe that the, the gas cost would have gone a lot higher, but I think it was, it was tempered a little by the, by the boiler replacement. So as we get more data and more bills and we put it in our spreadsheets, we'll be able to make those comparisons. So. So the budget also includes some large funding through the capital, through the transfer, transfer to capital line. And in this line, we have the ability to tackle some major projects. Susan mentioned some of those that affect athletics. We also balance it with need and you see, it's a pretty extensive list that the district was able to support since 2017. And this happens alongside the major capital project that's happening. And just to name some of them, if, if there's a curtain wall replacement that happened in the high school and middle school. There's repointing of major sections of the 1930s to 1960s building. High school lintel replacement in principal's courtyard, Midland fire panel replacement, PA lockdown upgrades Milton, Midland and Osborne. LVT floor replacement in many locations and across all schools. The high pressure gas main and gas alterations at the high school. So that's the photo that's in the lower left-hand corner of this slide. The gas line is that plastic poly line. It was mandated by Con Ed that we were, we were one of the last customers on a, on a 90-year-old steel line in the street and at a certain point they were going to cut it off. And we were able to collaborate on a project and, and locate it so it has no visual impact for the school. And we're honoring, you know, the, the beauty of, of this building especially and, and we kept it away from our flag. I know Gabby was, was adamant when we had those field meetings that, you know, we're not going to, we're not going to desecrate that zone. And, and we worked and found a location. But fortunately, we did have the, we had the flexibility and this fund to be able to handle that kind of unexpected necessity. The middle stool stairway code compliance, that's also a photo that you see. So it includes some of the new LVT we did there. On the right, that's the wall in progress. That was this summer, working with, with our on-bid contractor and we're able to achieve some of those code compliance necessities. But while, while we're in some of these spaces, we're taking the opportunity to, to upgrade and what you see there is a LVT also mentioned in the list. And for those, for those of you who've taken some of the tours, our facility tours, moving away from, moving towards a chemical-free, wax-free product just has all the environmental and labor benefits that, that I mentioned before. The polishing of the high school, high school, middle school and Midland, that's a photo in progress of Midland. It's kind of hard to see it, but just beyond the doorway, we were, we're doing it all second shift. You could see the, the chris square lines reflecting the ceiling lights, but where they stopped, it got all blurry. So it, it really was a remarkable difference. But beyond the, the aesthetics of it, it, again, it's the, the chemical-free aspect of it and it just, it gives our crews the ability to, to handle other parts in a building that, that we wouldn't have been able to before. So. There, the main stage at the PAC, Midland perimeter drainage, the hoop system at the basket, at the high school gym, HVAC controls. The list is, is fairly extensive and, and ongoing. One of the last things on the, that I have the photo of is just as recent as two weeks ago, we were doing the abatement work in the high school in preparation while the, we took advantage of the one break where we were unoccupied and we had a very productive week. And that's what the building looks like when it's, when it's unoccupied. It's just, it's an organized chaos. But again, this gives us the ability to, to handle that necessity. So in the transfer to capital line of, of goals that we have for, for the coming year would be the window wall in the high school eye lab. So in the photo in the lower left, that is the current state of the eye lab. Right before this meeting, I was speaking with the contractors who were working right down the hallway and they will be for the, for the next few weeks up until the summer. So it's an ongoing project. Again, I'm super thankful to the high school, middle school administrators who, who with some careful planning and shifting around, we made the space available and were able to get a head start on some of these, some of these construction projects that, that really would almost be impossible during the summer. So these small little investments in, in inconvenience now really pay dividends and overall shortens the, the project time. But the curtain wall was not part of the overall project. It's something that we kind of assess the need and look at, look at further deterioration. And being that we're doing some other work in that space, it really is, now's the time to do it. So for, for a marginal additional cost, it, doing it in conjunction with a larger project is just, it just makes so much more sense logistically. Some of the other projects, I won't give too much detail, but the high school softball field, as Susan explained very well, that's, that, that renovation on that field is included in this transfer to capital. Again, the, the card, the Salto card access that we've been able to, to complete at the elementary schools is underway at the high school now and it's just going to be a continuation until the district is complete. And so just to give you a sense of, of, of one of the projects that our maintenance crew is doing, and it's a skill that they've actually developed. We, we worked as a team during one of the breaks at Christmas. We took custodians from multiple buildings and created a little team and we were able to do 45 blocks in three days as, and we had an assembly line and, and it's, it's pretty complicated skilled work. So I'm, I'm pretty proud of what we, what they were able to learn in a short time and what we're able to accomplish in-house. Here's the actual numbers. Again, the, the larger drivers of some of the overall budget is what I explained in some previous slides. But each of these lines, we, we look at who are the vendors we, we've been using, what supplies we're purchasing, what are one-time expenses, what are ones that we could eliminate? And they're all analyzed and, you know, with the data. And as I, as I mentioned, there is a fairly new maintenance department that allows us to accomplish some of these projects. So the budgeting of it is also separated. So we're, we're looking at how, how we're deploying the department and how it's equating to savings by looking at, looking at expenditures over multiple years. So. And before I finish, I'd be remiss to not mention, I, I mentioned a facility crew. It's, it's a, it's a large crew that I happen to have the, I have the luxury of representing. But in addition to a lot of the folks and custodians, you see, there's, there's support staff and Suzie Peak is here to actually, she's so interested in facilities, she spent her, she wanted to spend her night here too. But the, the, all the management of the paperwork and, and some of these projects, like the playground I mentioned, finding the right vendor and, and then when the, when the payments come in, to make sure that they're, they're in line with the bid and their, their contractual obligations and, and the purchasing agent, accounts payable, like we're, it is a team. And again, I, I'm thankful for all of them. So I, I, I'm sorry if I didn't mention that sooner, but it is, it's definitely a, a large team effort. So.
Rob, if I, I could just ask, on the transfer to capital, you've got some timeframe on several of the projects?
Okay.
But with regard to the high school gym and the wrestling room, do you have, at least not the one I see here, do you, do you have a timeframe on, on those projects at this point in time?
So the high school, the high school gym, I, looking at the project and what we need to achieve and the short amount of time that we'd have to be able to work in there because it's used all summer and teams come in in August, it's probably going to be broken down into two summers with the portion that I believe we can start tackling this summer, whether it's, it's a tune-up and, and some of the, the seating replacement or possibly a paint job. We don't want to do anything twice. But, you know, just as a general rule, I always say you build from the ground up, but you renovate from the top down. So we might look at that space differently and we'll, and we'll see what we, we can tackle. But I would anticipate a full completion in the summer of 2025.
So some this summer, some?
Yes.
Okay.
Just because the bleacher is a massive unit and we're, we're probably going to leave it in the room and work around that and do a portion of the floor and, yeah. So it, logistically, it's, there's a few moving parts. So with the floor. But there's other portions that, you know, in the scope that we, we think we can and will handle this summer. So the, and the wrestling, wrestling room might be the same. There might be some design and equipment that has to be purchased, especially for, for the air conditioning and that might be, that might require a little time that we won't have, we won't be able to achieve this summer. But for those of, you know, who, who know me, I'm no, I'm not afraid of tackling projects like the eye lab that you see right down the hallway now. Like anything that we can do and do without any impact to, to the educational program, we certainly will.
Great. Thank you, Rob. So I, one of the things that you said that I think is just a really great testament to the work of the district as a whole. And it's not, it's not directly budget related, but it's more about an ethos and a culture that the district has created. And that's related to you referring to the maintenance department and the facilities department and having professional learning opportunities and working together. And it's just a great way to highlight that the work of the district is not a learning organization solely for the students. It's a learning organization for all who work for and with and on behalf of our students. And we are really fortunate to be the beneficiaries of a system that sees the value of that and, and wants to ensure that our employees get to grow just as our students get to grow. Because the more that your department is able to grow, the more that our kids get to have better experiences and our teachers get to have better experiences. And so I just want to say that as we then go into questions about your presentation. But I think that's a really important piece. Questions? Comments?
I mean, I'll just say that every time we talk about facilities, it's, it's amazing to me, the massive amount that has to be managed. And see, seeing the, the first picture where you have all of the different campuses and exactly how many acres that takes, I mean, that's, it's, it puts it in a perspective that I don't know that I ever really appreciated in that way. So it truly is a, a massive management process. And so you're going to need that team [laughs] to do it with you because
It's the only way.
There's so many things. And then on top of it, knowing that from when we did our building condition survey way back in 2015 and you are, we were already looking at so many areas of all the different buildings that continue to need maintenance and update. And, you know, we're, we're seeing a few of those being chipped away at here as part of this budget and we've seen others in past, the past year's budgets. It's, it's just, it's just phenomenal to, to watch how we can continue to keep our eye on that ball because it's such small incremental movement, but so important because of the needs that it provides for students and faculty and the community, quite frankly. So just thank you for, for all of that and, you know, for, for helping to, you know, keep us, keep us moving in that direction.
Thank you.
And don't sell yourself and your department so short because you are vital and a key element to the right commitment. Because a positive space impacts how kids are going to learn, how our teachers are going to be committed to the work that they do. And yes, you are behind the scenes, but anybody who's worked in a building knows, most of the time the building service people are some of the most powerful people in a building. And if you want to get something done, sometimes you ask the custodians and they can unlock doors and do things and get paper when you need it at the machines that other people can't always do for you. And you've had a lot of great hands-on experience with our community, the spring for rye trees.
Yes.
And working with the students related to that work and the playground. We are very fortunate to have a facilities department that cares as much about our facilities and our students as you all do. And so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be sure to relay that message.
Please do. Please do. All right. Seeing no more questions about any of our budget presentations, I think we can move on then to, and thank you all for coming tonight for
Yes, thank you.
It's always a great conversation and we really do appreciate having everyone here. So thank you. We will move on to the hearing of the public on non-agenda items. We have no public, so I will withhold from reading through the hearing of the public on non-agenda items, but I will remind the public that you are always welcome to attend our meetings and to please come and speak at this time. And if you should so wish to submit questions, you may do so by email always to the board. So we will move on to our consent agenda. Can I have a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda? Chris Ripetto, seconded by Sean Clapper. Let's take a look at tonight's consent agenda. Consent agenda general. Consent agenda fiscal. Consent agenda professional appointments. Consent agenda classified appointments. And consent agenda pupil personnel services and special education. Seeing no questions or comments, all those in favor for approving the consent agenda, that would be six, nothing with one absence. So on this evening's consent agenda, we have the establishment of our voting date for our school district budget and trustee election. So everybody, please mark your calendars for May 21st to So, everybody, please mark your calendars for May 21st, 2024, in the Rye Middle School Gymnasium. Voting will take place from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., but you don't only have to vote in person, you also have an opportunity this year for the first time to vote early, and you may also, as always, complete an absentee ballot. Information related to these different processes you can find on our district website. So, in addition, what else do we have? Oh, I thought this was really cool, so I'm going to share it with all of you, but you've all seen it anyway. So, on our agenda this evening, we have numerous resolutions related to joint bid processes, and I think this is a great opportunity to help everyone in the community understand we are looking at joint bid processes with BOSI's, TIPS, and Bus Transportation Services, which is really a great way to help us, to help save time and expense on behalf of the district. So, this is another way to be fiscally wise and prudent, and it's another illustration of the thoughtfulness of the district, and so we do thank you for that. That was everything on this evening's consent agenda that I wanted to highlight. So, we would move on to presentation and discussion number two, but we don't have any. So, we will go to information and discussion for policy review, 6700, purchasing. Mrs. Boyle?
Yes, so policies 6700, purchasing. The changes that you will see marked up in this policy are primarily consolidating the regulation and, regulation into the policy. Purchasing is obviously very important, as we've heard a lot about tonight. So, and there's a lot of different rules around purchasing, limitations of dollars and timing and all sorts of things. So, the, there used to be a separate regulation that talked about some of those more nitty-gritty things, and it was, felt that it was probably just as important to have all of those included in our main policy. I'm looking to our business official because there was a lot of discussion within that department, and also, I think, from some subsequent audits of things to include into the policy as well.
I was just going to, I was just going to mention that. So, as a result of our internal audit risk assessment, which is something we undergo every year, one recommendation was made with respect to verbal quotes that we receive as part of the purchasing process in terms of actually eliminating verbal quotes because there is a lot of ambiguity around verbal quotes. So, we've actually just eliminated verbal and made everything written so that there's no question when our auditors walk in for claims. So, as a result of that, we've updated the purchasing policy. So, that's something that the audit committee will be seeing later this year when that internal risk assessment is reviewed.
Great. And then there was only one other area that there was in addition made related to green purchasing, which is kind of toward the end of the policy, and it's in accordance with a education law to buy products that are more green and meet environmental standards and things like that. So, you'll find that under energy efficient purchasing toward the end of the policy. Any questions?
Nope.
It's a long one, so I'll give you a minute to look through it.
Very riveting, Lee.
Yes.
One of the bigger ones.
Okay. So, seeing no questions or comments, we will move that forward to our next board meeting for its second reading.
All right, sounds great. Don't go too far, Ms. Boyle, you're up again.
I'm not.
Board and district committee updates, we had a policy committee meeting.
We did. And surprisingly, we did not talk about purchasing because this has been talked about before. So, we spent, two of the main things, I think, from our policy meeting were, one, which was sort of a simple one, and I'll just kind of put this out as a point of information. We have our policy, which is related to DASSA and prevention of bullying and everything that falls under that. The number for that policy that we have assigned to it is 5040, and we had assigned that years ago. The number that is assigned to that from NISBA is 0115. So, this is a very technical, just little update to make sure, we're not going to bring that whole policy to the table because it's a number change, but I wanted to alert everyone that we are going to shift that policy from 5040 to 0115 to align with what NISBA has that policy numbered as, so that when we get updates, we are sure to make sure that we're not getting confused based on different policy numbers. And we will then be going through each of our policies to make sure any cross-references are updated and completed throughout all the other policies that refer to it. The second thing we talked about at policy was another, our next phase of looking at our mission and vision, and we are doing a deep dive of due diligence really into each of the mission and vision policies that exist, there's about five or six of them actually that relate to that general topic. And so, we're going to make sure that, are any of those concepts captured in any of our other policies that we have on the books? These are not mandated policies, they're not required for us to have. However, we do think there is information and elements within them that are probably reflected in our Rye commitment, but then also there's other pieces of it that might be reflected in other places. We want to go through and, and see where that, what we find as we look at all of those different policies related to other areas. So, that's the next phase of what we are looking at related to our mission and vision. And we did spend a little bit of time looking at social media as well, and we're taking a hard look at where does that best fit our, our purposes as a school district? Does it live as a policy or does it live in other places? So, we're having a lot of discussion around that as well.
Okay, sounds great. Look forward to those updates. And the technology committee meeting that you attended.
Yes, so I went to the technology committee meeting last week. And essentially, I was, it was very busy. And essentially, we heard a lot about what happened, but we sat down as a committee, the room was primarily all teachers at varying secondary and elementary levels, and, and looked at all of the different software that is used within the district for instructional purposes. And, and there was some discussion at that level of what are, what is your favorite one? How do you use it? How does it benefit in your, your instruction or for students? And so, it was sort of the kickoff to be able to really start to look at what of those software products that are being, that have been used, are still being used most frequently? Are there ones that have like properties that maybe we don't need to have each and every one of them? And that is the process that the, the technology committee is starting now to look at, to find some of those efficiencies across the board when it comes to the types of software that we use within the district.
Okay. Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Is there, are there, rather, pardon me, any other communications to and from the board? No? Okay. So, we will have our next meeting on March 19th, where we will have the 2024 budget adoption. But prior to that, beginning at 5:30 in the evening, gathering here?
Yep.
Gathering here?
Actually, the middle school eye lab.
Never mind. Oh, okay.
In the middle school eye lab.
The middle school eye lab, but you will come to the middle school entrance, and then if you need help finding the middle school eye lab, we will certainly help you do that. The Budget Community Cafe will take place, so it's an opportunity for members of the community to come meet and talk with the administration, get an opportunity if there are outstanding questions or want to get a little bit more information about the budget, that's your opportunity to do so. So, that will be at 5:30 on March the 19th, and then at 7:30 on March the 19th, we will have our Board of Education meeting at which a budget adoption will take place. So, if no one has anything else?
I actually think that there's a facilities committee meeting coming up, but I have to check that.
Okay, please do, because at current time, we have a March 20th policy meeting noted. But this only is reflective of things that really happened up until March 19th.
Okay.
So, if it's not happening between now and March 19th, that's why it wouldn't be here. But let us know.
I will.
Okay, excellent. Bless you, Chris. Okay, let's get out of here before Chris blows again. No, you need to take a vote. Can I have a motion, please, to adjourn the meeting? Chris Ripetto, thank you, seconded by Tom Stein, all those in favor, six, nothing, one absence. Thank you all, and have a good evening.